Good morning Wichita and welcome to City Hall. We'll call the meeting to order now. With us today is Reverend Ben Staley of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask that you please stand and join us for both Reverend Staley.
Let's pray together. Oh Lord, we give you thanks today for your presence with us and for your promises that you will respond to each of us and all of us whenever we are in need and call upon you. You will be the present help in our time of need and we ask today that you'd be with those in need in Southern California, in Ukraine, in Washington DC, and then here with us today. How thankful we are that you've given us good leaders in our city. Guide our new mayor and city council members to lead with wisdom and compassion and integrity. You are able to make all things new. We're thankful for that, but we also pray that you will make what needs to be better. We want your guidance and ability to make things what would be pleasing in your sight and helpful to the members of our community. That you would make things helpful and make all things new in our neighborhoods and in our homes, hospitals, and schools, in our businesses and commerce, and in all parts of our community, especially for the poor and sick and homeless. Make today us more caring toward one another and all who are in need. Be the prince of peace, the wonderful counselor and almighty God, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Staley. We have approval of the minutes for the meeting on January 23rd, 2024. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Clerk, open the roll. Members vote, please. Motion passes six zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Recognition for Catherine Katie Conkling.
At this time, may I please ask Katie Conkling to please come to the front along with her daughter.
Hi, I'm Katie Conkling. That's my daughter.
Want to come up here? All right. So we have Katie and Judy up at the stage. This is a really special day because a month ago Katie and her daughter were supposed to come to City Hall, but if you remember, it was our very first city council meeting and there was a snowstorm. And so we asked people to please not drive and Katie and her daughter Judy did not. And so we're doing this as a do-over and we're excited because Katie served as a World War II veteran and she turned 103 years old last month. And so this is a special recognition for her. I will give her a certificate of recognition that reads, "For all she has achieved throughout life and all she continues to accomplish, she embodies the values of Wichita through her life of service and dedication to her country as one of the first members of the Women's Army Corps, having served during World War II, and still as a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution and the Thomas Hopkins American Legion Post Four." Please help me in congratulating and wishing Katie Conkling a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak?
Well, I'm one of those things that was the early veteran because, well, when the women started in the military, the Congress says, you know, women are smart. Why don't we use them? And we all nodded, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. And so that's what I did. I'm one of those greenies. So I was sworn in quite early. Of course, in the military, I did that really early because Congress said, you know, women are smart. Why don't we use them? And we all agreed with them. And so they, you know, just almost right after that, we were sworn in as veterans. And so I've been doing that because I enjoyed doing that, being a veteran.
Well, thank you very much Katie. Judy? Would you like to say anything Judy? Okay, all right. We'll take a quick picture.
Okay, all right.
Can we go over right here?
Where do we go?
Yeah. With the whole council please.
She's my help. Oh yes, that's good. Thank you. So I enjoyed doing, yeah, I'm a guinea pig.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for your service Katie. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Sybil Strom. No one answers how Central came in and stole her stuff.
Before we begin public agenda, I will remind our visitors to please limit your comments to five minutes. You will see a timer at the front screens and I will give you a little nod at 30 seconds before you're done so that we can stay on time and be respectful of everybody who is here. Thank you.
My name is Sybil Strom. I reside at 326 North Walnut. I was outraged when the Central came in my house without permission. They stole my stuff. They broke in my house and I didn't even know nothing about it. I was at 2909 North Richmond. I got the news from one of my neighbors who does neighborhood watch. I don't understand. I'm supposed to be treated like a person, but the Central is a vulture. They come on me everywhere I live and it gets to the point, I can't take it anymore. I would like retaliation. I want justice. I want to know who the Central was that broke my lock at my old house and walked in and took pictures without my permission. And then I want Metropolitan Planning to be getting it too. They need to be. I went through a lot. I've been there for the community, but all they did is be vultured to me. They came into my house, they destroyed stuff, they took stuff. I want justice. I want justice now. I have been there for, like I said, for the community. I have took in kids that were in alcoholic environments, kids that were in drug-infested environments, and I have done things for the community. I've been assistant teacher at Franklin Elementary, not West Allison, and Lawrence. But what happened to me? I know that I can't take it anymore. I should not be going through this and I want retaliation. I want them to know, you cannot go into someone's house without permission and take pictures. Yes, I asked the Neighborhood Walk Project Committee to help me, Menonite Housing Committee to help me. Nobody helped me. Brandon Johnson helped me. I'm sorry, I should have called him a city council member, but he helped me. Becky's helped me. Maggie, nope. She just ignored me in a way. So I want justice. Please give it to me. And why is it when I ask for quit, who did it? I get no answer. You all know who did it. You need to step up to the plate and help us citizens out. I mean it. I had it emotionally draining, mentally draining. I need help. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Janice Bradley, unjust war in Gaza.
Good morning Mayor and Council. My name is Janice Bradley. I live in District Six, Midtown. There are times in history when it is critical for people to stand up and speak out. That time is now. After some two months of war on Gaza by Israel, responding to a brutal and atrocious attack inside Israel by Hamas, the UN Security Council took up a resolution calling for a ceasefire. The United States vetoed the ceasefire in the Security Council, which was supported by 13 of the 15 members. The indiscriminate bombing has continued with some 30,000 Palestinians dead and over 60,000 wounded. So on December 29th, South Africa filed charges of genocide against Israel at the International Court of Justice in The Hague, the UN's highest court. The court held hearings, public hearings, on January 11th and 12th. South Africa was able to prove intent, which is usually very difficult to do. Intent to commit genocide by quoting horrendous Israeli statements, dehumanizing Palestinians, and the plans stated by Israel over and over to starve Gazans and deny them electricity, water, medicines, food, and other essentials for life. On January 26th, I'm sorry, less than a month after, the International Court of Justice gave Israel three preliminary orders. The court found that it is likely Israel is committing genocide and that they must take action to prevent civilian death and injury. Number two, the court ordered Israel to take action to end the blockade of humanitarian aid. And three, that Israel must report, return in one month to report on measures taken. So the first two orders basically require a cessation of fighting. In other words, a ceasefire. The ruling on plausible genocide by the court, plausible genocide by Israel, triggers action by member countries to act to prevent the continuing genocide. Our own US government is continuing to arm and assist Israel's genocidal campaign, sending missiles and 2,000 pound bombs to continue the indiscriminate bombing. The war is widening. Houthi rebels are bombing ships and supplying Israel with, are bombing ships that are supplying Israel with weapons and people fear World War III. It is time for people of conscience to speak against the genocide. I ask that you move and pass a resolution supporting a ceasefire and steps towards a resolution of the conflict. How will you answer your children or grandkids when they learn this history and ask you what action you took to prevent the genocide in Palestine? The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ranford Lassine Thiel requests consideration of a resolution to support a ceasefire between Hamas and Israel.
Good morning Mayor Wu, city council members, fellow Wichitaans. I'm Ranford Lassine Thiel. I teach religion at WSU. As a resident of the city of Wichita, I'd like to speak today about the need for a ceasefire in Gaza. So often, we worry and feel helpless about things we don't have power to do anything about. In the case of this war between Israel and Hamas, the US is supplying Israel with the weapons and military support it needs to carry out its devastating assault on Gaza. This means that not only does the US have the power to end this war, but we as a city and we as US citizens can contribute to ending it. Israel's war is pulverizing a whole society. The Hamas attack on Israel on October 7th was atrocious and constitutes crimes against humanity. Killing of civilians, kidnapping, sexual assault, thousands of rockets launched causing fear and damage. Israel's response was to declare war, now entering its fifth month. We've heard the numbers. 27,000 confirmed killed in Gaza, more than 12,000 of them children, over 65,000 wounded. The dire situation has been described many times. About 82% of the population driven from their homes, many displaced multiple times, having lost everything. Even after the ruling of the International Court of Justice, which stated that Israel needed to act to prevent genocide, Israeli bombardment and other military actions have cost between 100 and 200 lives every day and more continue to be driven from their homes. Most Gazans now try to survive in a tiny corner of the small land strip, either in overcrowded houses with family if they're lucky, or sheltering in schools and hospital grounds, in makeshift tents, or suffering in the open. As of three weeks ago, 1,000 children had lost at least one limb. UNICEF estimates that 17,000 children are without an adult care person as a result of the fighting and that 100% of children are in need of psychosocial support. They're traumatized, they scream and shake from the constant bombardment all around them. Around 20,000 women have given birth since October 7th. Aid organizations do what they can to get kits distributed for home births. Since hospitals have become destroyed or are overwhelmed, children roam everywhere looking for scraps of food. It is impossible to grasp the severity of the situation. Israel says it does what it can to protect civilians, but these words are hard to reconcile with what we see. As a university professor, I'm stricken to witness the systematic destruction of education, knowledge, culture, and arts. As one Gazan journalist put it, "We have lost our memories and lost our future." Israel has blown up all 11 of Gaza's universities with labs, equipment, books, and computers, the archives of know-how. All schools are closed, hundreds used as shelters, many damaged or destroyed. The IDF has destroyed hundreds of mosques, including the ancient Omari Mosque, one of the oldest in the world, and that had been a church and a Roman temple before that. They've destroyed or damaged 200 of 325 ancient and heritage sites, sites going back to the Bronze Age and Roman times. The Byzantine era Saint Porfirus Church and other churches have been destroyed. Archaeological museums, Ottoman Archives, other museums and cultural centers. This is cultural genocide. When the International Court of Justice made its ruling, the US as a signatory became legally obligated. Doesn't mean that they have to agree even, it's a legal obligation to contribute to preventing genocide. We can use our voices as a city to let our stance be known. Palestinians everywhere are suffering in anguish we cannot ignore. We can listen to this, we can speak up. Here in Wichita, at WSU, Palestinians are among our fellow citizens. So for them, for all the webs of human lives that connect us with one another, Wichitaans, Gazans, Israeli Jews, Israeli Arabs, Palestinians throughout the Middle East and around the globe, and all who suffer from this war, I implore and call on you, city council members, to join the 50 or so US cities that have passed resolutions for a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our fourth speaker canceled, so we are on to Hope Dale, budgetary constraints on our transit system.
Good morning, City Council. I'm Hope Dale. I am an organizer at Sunflower Community Action and I stand here today to talk to you about the budgetary constraints that we have currently on our transit system. Did a little bit of digging and back in 2015, we had declared that transit should be prioritized over highways, byways, bypasses. And if we fast forward to nine years, we find, looking at that budget, that we kind of moved a little bit differently than what those wishes were. I delivered this exact speech back in December and the former mayor asked me to come and present it to you and let you know that we're really in dire need of revitalizing our bus system. And I think that the current budget is calling for about $17 million to be allotted for our transit system. And experts like Mike over at the Wichita Transit System knows that to get our transit system refurbished, as the Reverend said, to make it new, we need a lot more funds to be put into that. I know you guys are currently working on that budget this year. I'm watching that closely. I know that one of my coworkers were there and budget had actually gotten brought up so for transit, so that's really good. And I do have a specific ask for you this morning regarding the transit. Currently, they have a transit study going on. I went to the website this morning to check out the forum to see if you guys had posted. I went to the website this morning to check out the forum to see if you guys had posted. Can you get that survey up so we can get more feedback? Thank you. Amazing. That transit study is going on. If you could kindly make sure that when you are having your district advisory boards and things of that nature, that we are talking about that transit study, that we're getting more folks to put that input so that it can be a wider demographic of folks that we've had in the past for studies like this. In the past, these studies have garnered, I think, about six, maybe 800 surveys that kind of let people know, let you guys know how it's important. So my concern is the reach of that survey. We want to make sure that it's getting out to our citizens, that they are able to speak for themselves. I actually took a presentation in December, it was my birthday, and I went to the Wichita Transit Advisory Board, and I took about 15 surveys that I did via video. So I know that those are in your archives, so you have people like Sam. Sam wanted to give up his car, he's got a new baby, but he couldn't give it up because missing the bus by two minutes means you're going to miss your due date at work by 45 or in excess. And then you have users like Tyler, who has to travel from Rock Road to Second Meridian to reach his job. He has to get on the bus at 5:20 in the morning to get to his job by 7:00, 7:30. So there are some things that make it difficult. And we all know that transit could be the barrier between food, it could be the barrier between a job, and so those are really, really important intrinsic things for our city to have access to. And just revitalizing, renewing that transit system, taking a better look at that transit budget would be in our best interest for our citizens. And I thank you so very, very much for your time.
Thank you, Hope. Just one quick note, it is on our City of Wichita Facebook page, there is a transit study happening right now. You can take the survey both in English or Spanish, and that survey again is online right now, so it has been shared on our City of Wichita pages.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Maggie Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope, I just wanted to say thank you so much for continuing to come and educate anybody that is here or that may be watching that doesn't know how much work our transit system needs. We're doing good things, but we could be doing great things, and unfortunately, that is going to take more money. And the other problem that I have seen is there is a big stigma right now with public transportation or riding the buses. So that's something that we need to work on as a culture, and hopefully the money will, with our help, maybe help follow to increase the ridership. So thank you for continuing to come and help us educate the community on the problems with transit.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoheizel.
Thank you, Mayor. Something else I just wanted to point out, we actually have another study going on. I might be preempting Councilmember Tuttle here, she's the queen of WAMPO. But WAMPO are, it's our larger transportation body with surrounding cities like Mulvane and Derby. We actually have a study that we're doing right now that's going to look at connectiveness between cities as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was public knowledge as well, that we're taking a multifaceted look at transit throughout our city.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work, I really appreciate you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, I appreciate it. And I've been an advocate for transit for a long time, it's really an equity issue, right, for people to be able to traverse around our community to where they need to get. And I did want to thank Councilmember Hoheizel, pushed the button right before me, so I appreciate it, but pointing out WAMPO is great. I was actually going to pull Consent Agenda Item Number Seven just for discussion, but I won't, I'll just mention it now. But first of all, you are exactly right, Mike Tan, who unfortunately is no longer with the City of Wichita in transit, but he was a 21st century leader in our community and a real loss when he left. But one of the things that he was instrumental in was just fortifying our partnership with W.S.U., W.S.U. Tech, and 259 to create the next generation of ridership, right? And so in 2019, the ridership for W.S.U. was around 38,000, in 2023, it was 203,000 trips. And so we are taking steps, I agree, it's something that we can always focus on, but I think creating the next generation of ridership and de-stigmatizing being a transit user is something that we're focused on. So thank you for your efforts, and thank you for being interested, and please keep coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 24.
Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts stated February 5, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids of February 5, 2024 convene and have the following recommendations. And if I can find the mouse, I'll be able to help. For engineering, we have the South Lakes Park Pickleplex Complex. The recommendation is to cancel the ward of December 5, 2023 due to mistake of fact, reject all bids due to staleness in original project timelines. We have sanitary sewer improvements, Marietta Third Edition for McCullough Excavation Incorporated in the amount of $62,740. We have street paving, Tara Falls Street, Tara Falls Court, and Clark Street for Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, in the amount of $567,949.25. We have the 2024 Outsource Paving Preservation, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase 1 for Conspec Incorporated, DBA Kansas Paving, in the amount of $2,825,923.70. We have the 2024 Outsource Paving Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase 2 for Pearson Construction LLC, in the amount of $2,987,820.35. We have the Water Distribution System, Water Main Extraction, Stormwater Distribution, 512 Pave to Serve Area 151 Edition for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $5,391,333.60. We have for purchasing the sewer high-pressure cleaning hose for a key equipment and supply company in the amount of $72,155.33. We have the ERT Water Module for Itron Incorporated in the amount of $85,260. We have the Endence Hydrocyclone Skid for World Waterworks in the amount of $100,000. We have the Traffic Signal Controllers and Software for Cubic ITS Incorporated in the amount of $301,980. We have the Hess Pump Station Bear Pump for Ray Lindsey Company in the amount of $296,495. We have the Access Controls New East Patrol Substation for Sandifer Engineering and Controls Incorporated in the amount of $71,662.84. And we have the Install Hardware and Software Video Surveillance System for Axon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of $114,343.84. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer your questions, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for staff? Councilmember Glasscock.
I don't have a question, so if there's another councilperson that has a question. See none, I'll make comments. Not sure the correct way to do this as well. I have concerns with, or want more information, rather, about the South Lakes Park Pickleball Plex Complex. So I'm not sure how to exactly make this motion, but I would say, receive and file the report, approve the contracts, authorize the necessary signatures with an amendment to the Board of Bids and Contracts statement, where it would be cancel the ward of 1205, 2023 due to mistake of fact, and reject all bids due to staleness in original project timeline. I would add to that, do not go back out for immediate bid, and instead request a presentation from the consultant for the mayor and city council to review the project as a whole.
Legal, is that okay for the motion?
That's a motion you can make, and if there's a second, it can be voted on. Any discussion?
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, and members cast your vote. Motion passes, seven, zero. Oh, Councilmember Johnson, thank you. My screen is... Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Paul Gunsman, for the record, Public Works and Utilities. I have a new petition as well as revised petitions for your consideration this morning. Signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Revised petitions for Cypress Glen Edition located in District 5. On June 20, 2023, the City Council approved stormwater drain improvements as well as sanitary sewer improvements to serve Cypress Glen Edition. The developer has submitted revised petitions with revised budgets to meet current market New petitions for Pine Way Edition located in District 5 as well. Projects will provide water, stormwater drain improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, and paving improvements required for new residential development. It is recommended that the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? Public comment for this topic? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, members cast your vote. Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public Hearing and Request for an Amendment Letter, amended letter of intent for industrial revenue bonds, Union at Purple Heart Trail LP.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City Manager's Office of Development Services, for the record. The item before you today is a request for an amendment to the letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Union at Purple Heart Trail. Union at Purple Heart Trail LP is a real estate holding entity, which is an affiliate of the Annex Group. The Annex Group is a real estate development company based in Indianapolis, Indiana. The company is acquiring 12 acres of land south of Douglas on the east side of 127th Street East, just north of Kellogg. On December 6 of 2022, the City Council approved a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $35 million. The company applied for tax credits through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation and was denied in their initial application because of the competitiveness of the tax credits. They subsequently submitted a second application and were approved, but due to the delay in the start of the project, interest rates have risen and the costs to construct the facility have increased as well. Therefore, the company is requesting an amended letter of intent to increase the not-to-exceed amount of the letter of intent to $50 million. This is an aerial of where the project is located. You can see Kellogg running from top to bottom of the aerial, just a little bit right of center, and that is 127th Street East to the left side of the triangle, and so that is just north of K-96 on 127th Street East. The project has not changed in scale or scope, it is still 240 units for low-income individuals and families. It will be two four-story buildings that will be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Amenities will include a fitness center, a media center, business, computer learning center, and more. These are images of some of the projects that the Annex Group has completed. They anticipate beginning construction summer of this year and completing the project in early 2026. Therefore, to staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures, I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? I see none. I will open it up to public comment. I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for your work on this. It seems like we've been working on this project for quite a while. I remember one of the first Teams or Zoom meetings we had, we were still wearing masks, so it's been a bit. So thank you for your tenacity. Also, thank you to Union at Purple Heart Trail, I appreciate them, and anyone who wants to invest in our great city. And I'm especially happy that this is a project that brings more housing to our community, and especially low-income housing, more affordable housing, we know that's desperately in need in our community. So just want to thank everyone who's involved, and hopefully we'll see this project come
I see no further discussion. This is in Councilmember Tuttle's district.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, open the roll, members cast your vote. Motion passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public Hearing and Tax Exemption Request, Leading Technology Composites, Inc.
Again, Mayor and City Council members, Tim Goodpasture with the City Manager's Office of Development Services. The next item before you is a request for a tax abatement from Leading Technology Composites. Leading Technology Composites was founded in Wichita in 1993. They manufacture composite materials and products for aerospace, military, and automotive markets. They have developed armor systems for automotive and personal use, as well as structural assemblies for aerospace. The company is generally located at 2626 West May. On this aerial, you can see Meridian running through the middle of the aerial from top to bottom. This is just north of Pawnee, this is their primary facility at 2626 West May. The company is requesting an economic development exemption tax abatement, or an EDX tax abatement. EDX is a state-of-Kansas program that is designed for companies that are in one of three industry sectors. You have to be in manufacturing, warehousing and distribution, or research and development, all for products used in interstate commerce. The company is adding 34,000 square feet of new space and renovating three existing buildings. They are investing $3.2 million in real property improvements, as well as an additional $2.8 million in machinery and equipment for a total investment of $6 million. The company projects it will add at least 12 new jobs from a base of 518 employees over the next five years, with annual wages in excess of $46,000 a year. Based on the job creation, the company qualifies for a 30% abatement. Based on their capital investment, they qualify for an additional 50% abatement. Being in a regional growth plan sector, they qualify for an additional 10% abatement, and because they are utilizing state-of-Kansas incentives, they qualify for a final 10% abatement for a total abatement of 100% on a five-plus-five-year basis. Again, this aerial shows the 2626 West May facility on top. A little bit below that on the left is the facility that is located at 2045 Edwards, which will be renovated, and then the two buildings outlined on the right side are 2050 and 2056 South Edwards. The 34,000-square-foot expansion will actually enclose the space between those two buildings, and then those two buildings will be renovated as well. The estimated value of a 100% one-year tax abatement for this facility is approximately $92,000, with the city's share being a little over $26,000. $92,000, with the city's share being a little over $26,000. Leading Technology Composites has agreed to a payment in lieu of taxes or a pilot payment for the 10-year abatement. So, these properties are currently generating taxes today, and we are not in the business of taking taxes off of the tax roll. So, the existing taxes of almost $95,000 a year will be preserved, so all taxing jurisdictions will continue to get the existing taxes that they're getting today for the 10-year abatement. So, the taxes that will be abated will be on the increased value based upon the improvements that are created. We are not taking any property tax off of the tax rolls. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to cost for the city of 3.87 to 1, 3.28 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 5.2 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing and place on first reading the ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of documents for the economic development exemption for Leading Technology Composites Incorporated and authorize the necessary signatures. Rick Shear, who is a Senior Vice President with Leading Technology Composites, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? I have two questions for staff. What's the city's risk, and also what's the worst-case scenario?
So, the city's risk is nothing. In granting this tax abatement, if the facility is never built, then the tax abatement will never go into place. This is only an abatement on something that doesn't exist today. So, if they don't pursue the project, don't complete the project, there's no tax abatement on anything going forward. So, that really is no risk to the taxpayers. And again, with the payment in lieu of taxes, we're making sure that all taxing jurisdictions continue to get what they're getting today in terms of their taxes, so nobody is out any existing taxes.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any individuals in the audience who would like to speak regarding this?
Good morning, Council. My name's Twyla Purity. I live in the Polo Club. I really just have questions more for Mr. Goodpasture related to this. I have a little bit of experience with the IRB program. Now, when you... On the tax abatement, is it sales tax on the construction components and... I understand it's the property tax. That's one question. And the other question, the five-plus-five years. In my experience with the IRB, the extra five years was after proving a threshold of even more employees. So, I saw there's just 12 employees over... Quite a number. So, I'm just curious about what the incentives are so that they add more jobs.
Great question. So, you're absolutely right. The IRB program is different than the EDX program. So, industrial revenue bonds, which is most frequently what you're going to hear me bring forward for consideration, comes with a property tax abatement potentially and a sales tax exemption potentially, and it could be one or the other, or it could be both. The EDX program is a very narrow state-of-Kansas program. It comes with a property tax abatement only. There is no sales tax exemption with the EDX program. And as for the jobs, the jobs, the reason we do a five-plus-five-year abatement, in the state of Kansas, companies receive an abatement for a 10-year period if that's what the governing body grants. But we do them on a five-plus-five-year basis, meaning at the five-year mark, we will come back to Leading Technology Composites and say, "You said you were going to create 12 jobs at $46,000 a year. Did you do that?" And if they create at least 12 jobs at $46,000 a year, then we will come back to you as the governing body at the five-year mark and say, "Staff recommends granting them the second five years because they have met the obligations that they were supposed to meet." Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I see no further questions from the audience. We'll bring it back to the bench. Any questions from the bench or discussion? Councilmember Glasgow.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. Yesterday, I had the chance to visit with Rick and Joe and also Tim at LTC and was very impressed with their operations. They're a longtime locally-owned business that has history of developing projects over on the south side as well, and what they're doing for not only service members but members in law enforcement is something incredibly admirable, and I really appreciated the tour, especially the conversation regarding values and ethics. So, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to visit your facility. I'm excited about the opportunity to add 12 new jobs as well as a $34,000 or $34,000 square feet facility, and I think this capitalizes on the history of the south side as being the manufacturing core of the city, and I'm glad that we're continuing to add those projects. Also, very thankful for the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes to be able to cover the current tax. There's no risk to taxpayers, and I feel comfortable with this. So, unless there is anybody that is on the board, I would make a motion that the City Council close the public hearing, place it on first reading the bond ordinance authorizing the execution, delivery of documents for the economic development exemption for Leading Technology Composites, Inc., and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Requests for a letter of intent for industrial revenue bonds, Empower Evergreen.
Again, Mayor and Council Members, Tim Goodpasture with the City Manager's Office of Development Services. I promise this will be the last time you see me today unless you see me in the hall. The next item is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Empower Evergreen. Empower Evergreen is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization that was incorporated in 2021. That same year, the organization was donated two buildings at 2141 and 2157 North Market, basically Market and Broadway, Market and 21st Street, and they later acquired 103 East 21st Street North. The buildings comprise what they call the Nomar Project. The 2141 North Market Building was the original Nomar Theater, which opened in 1929. The area outlined in red are the 2141 and 2157 buildings, and the area outlined in blue is the 103 East 21st Street. You can see, obviously, right there at 21st and North Market Street. Empower is requesting a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $12,100,000 for a sales tax exemption only. As a 501(c)(3), they are entitled to a property tax abatement in their own right, so they are not requesting one as part of this request. The funds will be used to fund two projects. The Market Street Buildings will be converted to a community gathering space, and the 21st Street Building will be converted to a commercial kitchen. 2141 and 2157 North Market Street Buildings will become public dining, shopping, art displays, music, and cultural event centers. There will be a removal of asbestos and lead-based paint hazards. There will be a facade repair, and they will install six fully-equipped micro kitchens, retail space, and a soft-drink station, among other improvements. The 103 East 21st Street Building will house a multi-week food-based business startup program to train people in their own food-based businesses. There will be a demonstration kitchen and classroom, as well as shared commercial kitchen with eight workstations, a walk-in cooler, dry storage, and a patio between the 103 East 21st Street Building and the 2157 North Market Street Building, and there will be facade improvements to that building as well. This is roughly what the site plan will look like. On the left is the 103 East 21st Street Building. You can see the patio in between it and the 2157 North Market Street Building. Bond proceeds are going to come from money that the organization has raised and/or a loan from InTrust Bank. Bond proceeds are $12,100,000. The construction costs are estimated at $9.4 million, an additional $2 million in furniture fixtures and equipment, $564,000 in professional fees, and $82,000 in financing fees. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the City Council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Ariel Rodriguez, who is the Executive Director of Empower Evergreen, is here, and I believe Jean Camarena, who is the Board Chair, is also here as well and can answer any questions specific to the organization, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? I will ask the same question to you, Tim. What's the city's risk and what's the worst-case scenario?
So, there's no risk to the taxpayers on this. Again, this is a sales tax only, so the company will be provided a sales tax exemption upfront, so anything that they purchase, construction materials, furniture, fixtures, equipment, anything that is subject to a sales tax, they will use that sales tax exemption certificate to be exempt from the sales tax, but there is no risk to taxpayers in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask questions or discussion? I see none. We will bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say I am excited to see more development opportunities on the north end. I know that that has been a long time in the making. I remember former Councilmember Miller talking about some work on the north end, so this is really good to see and appreciate what Empower has been doing and Camarena says as well.
Councilmember Glasgow.
Tim, thank you for the presentation. Ariel and the rest of Empower, thank you for the opportunity to also meet with you this week about this project. I'm very excited. This is a one-of-a-kind project for the city to offer as a catalyst when we're looking at how to spur especially small businesses in economic growth. This is something that I would love to see more of and encouraging and creating like an incubator space for businesses to be able to thrive. So, thank you for what you've done. I'm also excited there's nobody else doing this space, so it's not that we're giving incentive over different competitors. We're just really incentivizing, and I'm excited to try the food coming out of there at some point, so I'll be a very frequent guest.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and I don't want to steal Vice Mayor Ballard's thunder because I know you have lots of accolades that you want to express, as you should, but I did want to say thank you to Ariel for meeting with me last week and answering the questions that I had, and then also just for the vision of this project. Again, it's exciting to see what's going to happen on the north end, and I appreciate Councilmember Ballard and past Councilmembers for championing this area.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to personally thank Gina Galanda Camarena. Without your vision and your support, this would not happen. So, you also made a good decision on hiring Ariel, so very good. So, congratulations and good luck.
This item resides in District Number Six. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, thank you so much for the presentation. I'd also like to thank Ariel and his board members for being here as well. This is a really exciting project that I feel like we've been talking about for some time, so this is just one step closer to seeing this project come to fruition. So, I really appreciate the vision and your ideas and all of the hard work that is taken to get thus far, and meeting with the other council members to make sure that everyone understands the project and what the plan is moving forward. So, with that, I'd like to take staff's recommended action and close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing and approval of a facade improvement project, 1101 West Douglas.
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Mark Elder here with the City Manager's Department of Development Services. The item before you today is a public hearing regarding facade renovations at 1101 West Douglas. You may recall back in January 16th, the hearing was set for today. This project is the full rehabilitation of 1101 West Douglas, and it includes both the update into the building along Douglas as well to become the offices of Lang Real Estate. Lang was founded in 1981, is originally just residential, but now they are into residential commercial development, full-service real estate offices. Their total investment in this project is around $3 million. The facade improvement project will be just including the exterior brick repair improvements to the entrance as well as the new windows and doors and other improvements on that exterior. This is the aerial view of Douglas and Seneca. You can see the buildings there, the actually three addresses, but we just refer it as 1101, but that entire building will be part of that facade renovation. This is an image of the existing facade, how it is today, as well as this is the east facade as it is today. Now, here are some renderings of what they are proposing to do. This is that north facade, and then this is kind of a corner so you can see both the north and the east facade of what they are proposing to do with that building. So, the facade project is setting a maximum assessment of $395,000. That includes about $341,000 of actual eligible expenses as well as city's financing costs with the administrative fee, but that 47.8 that you see in the financing cost does include one year's worth of debt service reserve on that project. That's one of the securities the city has in these, is we hold back one year's worth of debt service as precaution. So, the way the financing works is special assessments would be levied against 1101 West Douglas, but the interest rate will be set by the bond. So, when we go to issue the bonds, that's when the interest rate would be set on that loan, and it will be repaid over 15 years. The way this program works is the owner will actually pay the construction costs upfront for the facade, and then when those improvements are completed, they will be reimbursed for that, and then the special assessments are levied against that property. So, following completion of those improvements, like I said, that's when we do the final assessment. And so, what happens is we set the maximum assessment today, and if those improvements come in less than the maximum assessment, we would bring that back to the council just to adjust that down. With that, it's recommended the City Council close the public hearing and place the maximum assessment ordinance for the 1101 West facade improvements on first reading, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for staff? I have three questions for you. First one, the same ones I've asked previously, what's the risk to the city and what's the worst-case scenario regarding this project? And then, can you explain one more time regarding why we're using specials not on a residential building, the new move towards this new plan?
Correct. So, yes, the facade program actually has several precautions in that to safeguard the city. The first one would be that we set the maximum assessment at no more than 25% of the city of the building's value. So, that just is a protection if we were to go to sale that, you know, there's still value in that building that's not tied up in that assessment, because what happens is when we assess that property, no matter who owns that building, it's paid with the taxes. So, if they were to sell, if it goes to tax, the special assessments are still paid with that building. But with that, we also have the one year's worth of debt service reserve on that to where if for some reason there ever is a year where the payment's not made, we have that reserve in place to make that payment to keep the city whole. Now, if, you know, they go the full-time and there's no issue, that reserve is then used to pay that 15th year after they paid the 14. But otherwise, we hold that as an extra precaution for the city, so we have several safeguards in place to protect us on that. As far as the special assessments, we have been using special assessments since 2001 for this program. Really, the change would be originally we used the same state law that allows special assessments like you have for the roads, road sewers, all that for new subdivisions because it allows improvements to walls abutting a public right-of-way. And so, our program historically has been to... I don't know, backspace. To only be able to do improvements along the public right-of-way. So, in this situation, the east side would be the only one that you could fund. The change that we're recommending is the Community Improvement Districts bill allows for special assessments. So, the special assessment is really just that levy against the property that's repaid over time, but the CID allows for additional improvements that are not just restricted to the right-of-way, so now improvements to the facade along... just restricted the right-of-way. So now improvements to the facade along the north side there that sits back behind the parking lot is also allowed to use the special assessment financing for that.
Thank you, Mark. I see no questions from the bench. I will open it up to public comment at this time. Any public comment? I see none. I will bring it back to the bench. I see none. This resides in Councilmember Glasgow's district. I will allow Councilmember Glasgow to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we close the public hearing, place the maximum assessment ordinance for 1101 West Douglas facade improvement on first reading.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Park and Recreation Budget Adjustment.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item I have for you now is in regards to the Parks and Recreation Grant Budget Adjustment. A little bit of background. So the Parks and Recreation Department received an aggregate of almost $2 million in federal pass-through grants originating from the Department of Children and Families. Grants are received in three phases to support operations of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment Children Care Program held at Neighborhood Recreation Centers here in Wichita. The funding allotment is determined by each of the facility's enrollment capacity of the KDHE Child Care Program. Federal funding is subject to a single audit, but not chosen in previous years in external audits by the city of Wichita. However, internal audit, annual risk is assessed and determined with grants that would be included into 2023-24 internal audit plan. The audit was conducted in August of 2023 through January of 2024. It evaluated the financial management and the administration of the grant award. This is important because per federal regulations, financial management and administration of the grant is the responsibility of the grantee. However, any deviation from the grant requirements would jeopardize the city's ability to receive future federal funding. So an analysis in regards to the audit. The internal audit concluded that there were ineligible expenses charged to the grant. Determination was difficult as the recreation centers are used for other programs other than just childcare. Per the direction of the pass-through agency, staff reviewed the operating expenses and expenditures for the Parks and Recreation to determine if they were eligible for expenditures that could be replaced for those deemed as eligible. All but $37,531.85 were replaceable. Some of the benefits of the grant that covered at the recreation centers is as follows. So we had some technology improvements, which included laptops, charging stations, hotspots, upgraded internet connections, media equipment, and a 3D printer, staff development and training, which is really important, and new staff uniforms, equipment for the recreation centers and for the rentals, which included new basketball goals, lockers for the gyms, craft supplies, inflatables, helium tanks for parties and gatherings, new refrigerators, an ice machine, and camp t-shirts. Some aesthetics and functional improvements to the facilities included a new gym floor, painting, and new exterior signage. So financial considerations. The Parks and Recreation Department will return $47,831.54 to the pass-through agency. The amount that could not be replaced, plus $10,299.69 of advanced funding on the grant that was unspent. The funds to repay the agency will come from the grant. A 2023 budget adjustment is necessary to reallocate the budget from personal services to commodities and capital outlay. The personal services were deemed eligible by the pass-through agency and were moved to the grant, thus resulting in available budget. The recommended 2023 budget adjustment is to reduce the personal services of $393,000 to increase the commodities by $150,000 and capital outlay by $243,000. So here you see a nice little graph. The grant dollars are going into the operating and commodities that was where it was spent. However, we placed the money into the operating services, which is eligible expenses and actually covers the requirements of the grant. So it comes out with a budget adjustment with the operating expenses that excess of the personal expenses, $393,000, will be split with the commodities and the capital outlay for the budget adjustment. So the legal recommendation, legal considerations and recommended action based on AR 2.5, budget adjustments greater than $50,000 require the approval of City Council. It is recommended that the City Council approve the recommended budget adjustments. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Troy. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Troy, for the work on this. This was self-reporting. Right, we found a mistake and we report. I think that's important to note. We were not trying to cover anything up here. Do we suspect that this will hinder our eligibility in the future for this or any other grants? Or is this an understandable mistake that can usually be ironed out?
I think it's definitely something that I'm glad we caught ourselves. It was self-reported. I don't think it's going to jeopardize any future applications. In fact, we're expecting more funding in the near future.
Okay. And what is the pass-through agency that we're returning the money to? Did we get it through the state or?
Yes, it's through Child Services.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Troy, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Internally, do you have people that look after these grants and make sure they're spent correctly?
We do. I think a lot of this was a little bit of misunderstanding about what qualifies and what is not. Some of those actually changed as we did go through the process. But working with our internal auditor and working with the budget staff, we were able to really kind of put it back on track. Would probably be very much similar to what we're doing right now, where those expenses would be going into personal services, and the excess would be moved over into commodities. So we can actually use that funding for the things that we need. So I think we can anticipate budget adjustments when we use these type of grants in the future.
Okay. Do I understand, too, there's also $10,000 that will not be used?
That's correct.
Is that a missed opportunity? You used that $10,000?
$10,000 out of a million, I think, is pretty good. Yes, but yeah.
Two things for staff. First, Troy, congratulations to your team for winning some awards last week. I know that that speaks volumes to the efforts that you all put together for quality of life here in our community. Second thing is actually for City Manager Bob, can you just explain one more time the importance of an internal auditor and that this is to increase transparency and to make sure that we are doing what we tell our community that we're going to do?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. The internal audit function is important to the city. We've had an internal auditor for numbers of years. There was a period of time that we had a vacancy in the position, and we have, I think, a very skilled person in the position today. It's a unique position because the person reports both to the mayor and council as well as the city manager. And so the mayor and council can direct the auditor and receive reports from the auditor outside of the administration. And so that independence is extremely important. The person is responsible, or that office is responsible, for reviewing our financial operations. In this case, we'll review a number of grants and how we spend funds in our grants, usually dollars, dollar amounts that are below the threshold for the external auditor. So the number of grants that will meet that criteria. Also, the routine functions, checking inventory, cash controls, things like that in our buildings as well. So it's, I think, we get another layer of review of our financial affairs beyond what we get from our external auditor and what we get in our regular, everyday reviews by the finance department.
Thank you. Any public comment regarding this topic? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I see none. Zero motion? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the City Council approve the recommended budget adjustments.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
2020 Floor Playground Rehabilitation and Development.
For the record, Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation. The next item I have for you is in regards to 2024 Rehabilitation Program for Playgrounds. So a little bit of background and analysis. The Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for 87 playgrounds. The playgrounds are routinely inspected by trained employees to assure safety. The 2024 funds will focus on the following items. Supplementing grant funding for a new interpretive playground at Pratt Wetlands, OJ Watson upgrades and repairs, Central Riverside upgrades and repairs, and other repairs as identified throughout inspections of our whole system. In this picture, you'll see a picture of OJ Watson, and we have sand as the safety surface in this particular playground. Our efforts are to change that to other surfaces that are ADA accessible. Sand is not, is one of those items. And so we're going to be replacing this with engineered wood fiber. So these are the type of programs that we do every year. This is the annual process of upgrading and making sure that we are up to standards with our playgrounds. Financial and recommended actions in 2024-2033 adopted capital improvement program, we have $425,000 in the 2024 Playground Rehabilitation and Development category. It is recommended that the City Council initiate the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Available for any questions?
Any questions for staff? I see none. But I have one question for you, Troy. I know that there was vandalism back in September of 2023 at Southview Park Playground. Can you tell us again, whenever these types of crimes occur, how does that affect the budget for you all and the overall system?
So whenever we get vandalism, it's an impact on our budget because we have to replace those items. And those are unanticipated costs and expenses because we don't necessarily budget for vandalism. So that takes away our ability to continue the high level of maintenance and operations. That just means that we are going to be asking for more capital dollars later on to make those repairs and upgrades. It's just a loss of taxpayer dollars.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, I just wanted to say thank you for taking a close look at some of these parks that need to be improved. We hear about deferred maintenance all the time. And I appreciate that we are making some improvements along the way. I don't know how you choose which parks and where and how all of that works, but I really appreciate your efforts to try to make the improvements, especially for ADA.
To answer that question, we evaluate all the playgrounds and find which ones are of highest need. And then we look at distributing it amongst all the districts. So we have equal distribution around each one of the districts. So just to share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from staff? I see none. We'll take it to the public. Any questions from the public or discussion? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Would a council member like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I will go ahead and make the motion that City Council authorize initiation of the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
2024 Aquatics Facilities Improvements.
Last item I have for you today. For the record, my name is Troy Hauptman, Director of Parks and Recreation, is in regards to the 2024 Aquatics Facility Improvements. And it's going to be in Districts One, Four, Five, and Six. Some background, the Aquatics Master Plan, also known as the AMP, was approved in 2019 and completed in 2021. It rehabilitated six pools and created six new splash pads. Poolhouses or bathhouses were not addressed in the AMP, and they need to be addressed because of some deferred maintenance and projects within those facilities. The Wichita Police Department conducted a crime for prevention through environmental design, also known as SEPTED, for the assignments of the pools in 2022. A couple of items that they found was that we needed to put in some security cameras, which we've installed through a different fund, and make improvements to the buildings to discourage vandalism and increase the usage. Kind of the shuttered building, broken window effect. If you see those typically, that actually adds more vandalism to those areas. So an analysis of the work to be done. The bulk of the maintenance will be conducted prior to the summer. We will not cancel or close any pools for this work. It will be worked around the season, the pool season. The Parks and Recreation Department and Public Works and Utilities maintain a running list of all the maintenance needs throughout the year. And the list of some of these would include plumbing and mechanical equipment, building and roofing systems, electrical repairs, amenity replacement, ADA accessibility barriers to address those, and improve chemical storage. The Aquatics Facilities Improvement Fund will address these needed upgrades from the list to restore many of the pool functions and the facility. Better preservation will also occur through improved chemical storage. The chemicals can be corrosive if not stored correctly. So a couple of examples, and these are some of the running themes. We have doors that have been damaged that need to be repaired. And obviously, as part of the function of the building, some of the roofs to repair some of the leaks, and some of the gaps within the roofs. And this is particularly in College Hill, Menace, and Ailey. Exterior lighting, which has a nice impact in regards to safety and security. So here's some examples of Ailey Orchard and McAfee Pool. Some vandalism, the large one that happened at Ailey last year that burnt the sunshades that will be replaced, and some other locations where we've had some graffiti. Painting the facilities. So interior areas within the bathhouse, the changing rooms, they obviously need some painting. In this location at Menace, but that's very typical of all of our locations. In the exterior locations, we have Ailey that needs some painting, as well as College Hill. The financial and legal considerations. The 2024-2033 Capital Improvement Program includes $1 million of GO bonds funding for 2024 for the aquatic facility improvements. Staff identified savings, $677,255 in under expenditures from the original amount allocated for the Aquatics Master Plan. Staff recommends putting the two together, initiating the $1,677,255,000 at this time. The law department has reviewed The law department has reviewed and approved the bonding resolution as to form. The amending resolution will decrease the original account for the Aquatics Master Plan by six hundred and seventy seven thousand two hundred and fifty five and actually close that project. And a new resolution, creating a new project, will initiate the one million plus the savings in the under expenditures for a new project for the Aquatics Facilities Improvements. Recommended action is recommended that the city council authorize the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions about security. You had mentioned security had already been improved by installing cameras at these locations. First off, what type of camera system are we using? Was the police department consulted in what equipment we're using?
I don't know the name brand of the particular camera system, but the police department was very much involved. Our IT department was involved as well, working through a local vendor that has been very reputable and very knowledgeable of our facilities and systems. And so I do know it's already been, in many cases, it's been installed and actually been activated, where the police have been called on some of our midnight swimmers to find out what they're doing there in our pool. Some of our skateboarders that thought that the empty pool would be a great place to skateboard. So I know it's already working.
If I could have follow up of who the vendor is, is why, I just want to make sure all of our systems are compatible, and the police aren't having to look through multiple different systems, and that we're using the same systems across the board. In addition, I know that Linwood had a loss this weekend to the city for vandalism. Were we able to use the cameras to be able to properly identify?
So it wasn't hit at the at the splash pad, it was actually outside the splash pad in the general area of the park. More so, the damage was at a cell tower that is not owned by the city. So they received most of the damage. And then the rest of the damage was in regards to a connection to some of the park lighting. We have some smaller lamps, and those were hit. So but those aren't necessarily covered by cameras because we couldn't have cameras covering every single square inch of the park. We just really focused on the splash pads, and which was not hit.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions for now.
To go back a little bit about your question, when we go out through bids for the cameras, that was definitely something that was considered, was the compatibility with the police department. They review the specifications, as well as IT reviews the specifications. So obviously, I think we are getting what was expected. We will come up and follow up with you in regards to the name brand or the company that made the installation. But when we do these bids, we put in these specifications to address those type of concerns that you have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Troy, for all your work on this. Are these both, these are the, just the pool houses at the pools?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, we have.
And the splash pads as well.
Okay, so some of the splash pads on here. Yeah, I think I remember hearing that they couldn't necessarily get into our pool house there at Linwood, so that's a good sign there.
So for the pool houses, most of them are in pretty good shape. Our splash pads, which were renovated from pools, we actually had some that didn't have access to the bathrooms. And that's one of the reasons why we kept the bathhouses for those splash pads, so the users that have little kids have access to the restrooms. So those are the needed renovations that we need to address.
Okay, thank you. The, what are the status of our splash pads? Do we have any that need a little bit of work before the season, or are they all looking pretty good right now?
They're all looking really well. We're expecting all of them to be open, same with our swimming pools. And always knock on wood because we always have some kind of mechanical issues. And with the supply chain the way it is, when we lose a pump, when we have an issue with a particular feeder, we're waiting for the supply chain to give us the repairs.
Yeah, don't I know it, brother. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Troy, to your staff for all your work on this. And when you mentioned the Aquatics Master Plan, one of the things that I've been most proud of that we've worked on since I've been on council. Also, I wanted to thank the Wichita Police Department for coordinating with the Park and Rec Department and trying to make sure that we can come to the great resolution. I saw you this morning on a local news station as Councilmember Johnson. Great job. One of the things that was mentioned was that there would also possibly be some art elements because we know when we have art in our public facilities and in our parks and, you know, other places, that it helps actually decrease crime and vandalism. So just wanted to see if maybe you could highlight that a little bit. Thank you.
So through the Aquatics Master Plan, I think we initiated, I can't remember the dollar amount, but it was quite a bit. We have major pieces of art in all of our swimming pools. Ailey Pool is a great example. We have a flying turtle that is made out of galvanized steel. And it's really a cool, cool item. Along there with, in that park, we have a lot of tiles that were put in place, painted by the neighborhood kids from that school nearby. And by the way, that flying turtle won an art award someplace in Chicago. But in every single one of these swimming pools, we've had art installed.
So just to follow up, will this project include any more art or anything, or is this just routine maintenance?
It's more than routine.
Well, but yes, maintenance. Okay. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, thank you for your hard work on this. Pools are very important to me personally, so I'm excited that we're getting close to the last phase of improving the bathhouses. Just one quick follow up question to Councilmember Glasscock. Are there cameras currently at all of the splash pads and pools?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
One additional item I wanted to share as well is we did receive a grant, a heritage grant for McAfee Pool. And so that's going to be an additional hundred and seventy thousand dollars for maintenance of that location, which is really important to the user groups and stakeholders of that that pool.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for discussion from the public? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I have two quick items. You mentioned SEPTED, Troy, and I really appreciate that. The crime prevention through environmental design is an opportunity where law enforcement can come out to either businesses or even homes to evaluate your property, to make sure that you are being cognizant of how you can prevent crime with your own property. So thank you for highlighting that and using that in our parks. The second is, I'm excited for Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty seventh, when the pools will open and the splash pads will open. So that's a date so people can look ahead to May twenty seven, to the start of that season. I will ask a council member to make a motion. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council authorize the initiation of this project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Design and funding for multiple capital improvement program projects.
Good morning again. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities. For the record, the item before you is funding for design of multiple, multiple capital improvement projects located throughout the city. The adopted twenty twenty four through twenty thirty three capital improvement program includes multiple projects that are identified to begin design in twenty twenty four. The projects include Twenty Ninth Street North and Broadway intersection, Second Street North from Main to St. Francis, Douglas Avenue from Washington to Grove, Harry Street from Hundred and Twenty Seventh Street to Hundred and Forty Third Street, and Maple from Hundred and Thirty Fifth Street to Hundred and Sixty Seventh Street West. The intersection of Twenty Ninth and Broadway, we have submitted this intersection for consideration to KDOT for Highway Safety Improvement Program funding due to the number of crashes at this location. We will coordinate with the railroad since it's adjacent to that and make sure that we keep the railroad preemption as we move through the project. The intersection currently doesn't have left turn lanes, so we will ask the consultant to evaluate the need for those. Moving on to Second Street from Main to St. Francis, we will ask the consultant to review the lane configuration, parking, any parking improvements, as well as bicycle and pedestrian improvements along this corridor. Douglas Avenue from Washington to Grove, this project does have some history with it. A concept was developed in two thousand and eighteen with angle parking on the south side of Douglas and parallel parking on the north side. We had worked with the Douglas Design District at that time. They had striped curb extensions and possible median locations. As you drive through the corridor, you can see what could be in the future if that is approved. In twenty twenty, Nelson Nygaard also developed some additional concepts. And when we have a consultant on board, we will work with local businesses as well as staff to make a final recommendation to complete design of the corridor. Harry Hundred and Twenty Seventh Street to Hundred and Forty Third Street. This project will be filling in a gap. The intersection of Hundred and Twenty Seventh and Harry was improved with a previous project on Harry from Greenwich to Hundred and Twenty Seventh Street. The intersection of Hundred and Forty Third and Harry will be improved with a project along Hundred and Forty Third Street from Harry to Kellogg that I presented to the board in recent weeks. So this will fill in, improve Harry between those two intersections. And we will ask a consultant to look at lane configuration, drainage improvements, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities along the corridor. The last project before you is Maple Street from Hundred and Thirty Fifth Street West to Hundred and Sixty Seventh Street West. This actually is programmed in the CIP as two separate projects. We believe we could design both two miles at once, as well as look at possible constructing the two miles at the same time instead of a mile. They are programmed separately, a year apart in the CIP. So again, we will have the design consultant look at lane configuration, drainage improvements, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Financial considerations, as I mentioned before, the existing budget of eight hundred thousand dollars for Douglas from Washington to Grove was approved by city council on January eighth of two thousand and nineteen, and it was funded by general obligation bonds. The adopted twenty twenty four through twenty thirty three capital improvement program includes two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of local sales tax funding for design of this project in twenty twenty four. Staff requests initiating the full amount for a revised budget of one million twenty thousand dollars. The requested budget for design and project management costs for the remaining projects are listed below. Twenty Ninth Street North and Broadway, five hundred thousand dollars. Second Street North from Main to St. Francis, five hundred thousand dollars. Harry Street from Hundred and Twenty Seventh to Hundred and Forty Third Street East, three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And Maple Street from Hundred and Thirty Fifth Street West to Hundred and Sixty Seventh Street West for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. All projects will be, will return to the city council once we go through the design consultant selection. And in addition, we will bring the design concepts once those are ready to be presented to the city council at a future date as well. At this time, it is recommended that the city council approve the budgets, adopt the resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Johnston.
Paul, thank you very much, and thank you for including Maple from Hundred and Thirty Fifth to Hundred and Sixty Seventh. There's a zoning case, and I think the residents are more concerned about the street than they are about the zoning case. So it's much, much needed. Leads to a Goddard Eisenhower, and there's a lot of traffic on that street. Badly needs to be done. If we can move it up in the budget process, that would be great to construction. So thank you. And with that, if no other comments, I'd make the motion.
One second. Public comment? I see none. Bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnston.
Okay. I will make the motion to approve the budgets and adopt the resolution and gain the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Local wellfield improvements project.
Good morning. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you at the moment would approve the budget and a contract for engineering services for improvements to the city's local wellfield. The local wellfield is an important part of the city's phased water supply plan with the objective of providing sufficient water supplies through prolonged drought. The local wellfield includes eighteen wells that were constructed in the nineteen forties and fifties. They're located along the Arkansas River in the vicinity of the existing water treatment plant near Botanica and the Arthur B. Sem Golf Course. Some of the wells will still produce water, although they may not maximize the amount that could be recovered, so they're in need of repairs and workovers. Other wells will need to be replaced or rehabilitated. This is expected through time as wells age. These improvements are necessary to fully utilize the existing water racks that are already in place. Upon completion, the project will maximize the use of the existing annual water right of about sixteen thousand acre feet in a normal year. The project will furnish raw water to the new Wichita Waterworks Plant and maintain the ability to send raw water to the existing plant if necessary. It'll provide critical supply for emergencies. For example, if we lost the ability to pump water from Cheney Reservoir, the Equis beds, this would provide needed supply to get through that emergency. But the main component of the phased water supply plan is for drought. The risk of not doing this project would result in more severe restrictions on our customers through a drought. For instance, it's estimated that the supply will maintain the drought restrictions no more restrictive than Phase Two. Otherwise, we would be looking at multiple years of Stage Three drought restrictions. Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated was the lone proposer on this project. The proposal was reviewed by staff screening and selection committee, and Burns and Mack was selected based upon their project approach, the schedule, the staff assignment, previous similar projects and expertise. Burns and Mack has thorough knowledge of not only our phased water supply plan, but also the local wellfield and the hydrology and the model that we use to predict pumping rates and flow rates. The work under the contract will include a condition assessment of the existing assets, additional modeling to determine future pumping conditions, including during drought, to optimize well locations that need to be re-drilled or water racks that need to be transferred to other points of diversion. It will update electrical systems, electronic controls, to rehab existing wells, and then cover the the design permitting of replacement wells as necessary. Funding for this project is included in the twenty twenty four through twenty thirty three adopted capital improvement program under the light item phased water supply plan. Staff recommends initiating one million five hundred thousand dollars at this time for this phase of the project. And the total cost for the engineering contract is nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approve the contract with Burns and McDonald for Engineering Services, approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signature. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Don. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Don, for the presentation, and all your guys' hard work on this. Bear with me for a minute. Councilmember Fry was our resident water expert, and I think we all need to brush up on this a little bit more. So since the wells are so close to the river, does that help make ensure that they don't run dry?
Actually, if this is, this is outside the Equis beds, outside of groundwater management district number two. So the hydrology of the local aquifer is different. And it's, the local alluvial aquifer is actually shallower and has a thinner, less saturated. saturated thickness than the Equis beds. So the proximity to the river maximizes the ability to withdraw water, but there's not as much water in the local aquifer as there is in the Equis bed, so it's kind of both.
Okay, so it's just as needed, sort of a backup, it's not where we don't run it dry?
Yes. This was the original wellfield that was developed, which wasn't, I mean, in the 40s and 50s, it provided adequate supply for a short period of time. But it was intended more for an emergency supply, should we lose one of the major sources.
Okay. Do we have plans for any other wells in the future?
Not, not wells in terms of additional water racks, but we have a wellfield maintenance plan that's an annual plan in the Equis beds where we replace wells as needed and work over wells.
Okay. And the last one, you kind of hit on this a little bit. So you're going to come up with a strategy, or I guess, an operations plan to pump the water? So are we looking right now at pumping it through the old plant, or is that something we're still kind of looking at?
Yeah, right now, we have the ability to send water from the local wellfield to the old plant. We don't have full capacity because of the condition of the wells, but, but we can do that now. After the new treatment plant comes online, there will be a pipeline to pump water, or to furnish water to the new plant. That connection will remain with the old plant as well until the fate of the old plant is decided.
Okay. Thank you.
If you know further questions for staff, we will open it up to public comment. I see none. Bring it back to the bench. There are councilmembers who would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Why not? I move that the City Council approve the consultant selection and contract, budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your votes. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding for water treatment instruments and communication equipment.
Once again, for the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you now would approve the budget to purchase needed electronic control equipment for the production of drinking water. During the treatment process, electronic communications with remote sites in the control room, such as a Cheney pump station, Hess pump station, and the booster, a pump station is critical for monitoring system pressures, the chlorine levels in the system, and for making the necessary adjustments. This equipment includes things like computerized controllers, radios, chlorine analyzers, system pressure control monitors, and additional hardware that's necessary for monitoring and making adjustments. The plant operators are able to operate these things remotely from the control room, and strong and reliable communications are necessary to avoid potential for permit violations and boil orders, and is in the best interest of the public. The current communication equipment is near the end of its useful life, and so it's prudent at this time to move forward with replacement ahead of failure. Failures in equipment, again, can cause things like boil orders, inability to accurately monitor disinfectant levels, can cause large fluctuations in pressures, break pipes, or have pressures that are too low, below permit requirements. And it's important to note, too, that the proposed equipment will continue to be used once the new Wichita Waterworks comes online, because these are associated with remote facilities. The adopted 2023 through 2032 Capital Improvement Program includes $120,000 in 2023 and funding in the amount of $140,000 in 2024, listed under the light item Wichita, or Water Treatment Plant Instruments and Communication Equipment. Staff requests initiation of the full amount of $260,000 at this time for purchase of the equipment. Therefore, it's recommended that the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I remain available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll take it out to public comment. I see none. Bring it back to the bench. Councilmember who would like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would make a motion that the City Council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your votes. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Home program funding for Mako Development's Southbrook Estates project.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Sarah Gooding. I'm your Real Property Section Manager, and here this morning to talk about the home program and an opportunity to have a conditional commitment with Mako for a development of Southbrook Estates. Okay. So, the home program kind of have a revolving grant cycle, so this morning, actually talking about May of 2022, when the City Council approved final allocations from the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. And this plan includes a little more than 686,000 in home investments partnership program funding, and this is for the housing development loan program. Home funds are a federal entitlement funding source received by the City of Wichita, and they're really all about being able to develop affordable housing. And so the housing development loan program helps to provide subsidies for infill housing, and it also can help support real estate that is idle or underutilized. It provides needed housing for underserved populations. And so, HCLP funding can be available for either nonprofit or for-profit organizations, and the loan structure that we use with this funding source is dependent on the type of project that we're financing. Funding requests are received on an open application basis, and so that's why we bring these here one at a time as we have different project opportunities. And so a little bit of background on this project. For those of you who were on the previous council, this will sound familiar. Mako Development originally submitted an application for HCLP funds a year ago for the Southbrook Estates project. On April 11th, City Council did approve a conditional commitment of funds, and that was basically a preliminary step for Mako Development in its application for 9% tax credits through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. Now, 9% tax credits are extremely competitive, and they were the majority of the funding source proposed for this project. At that time, Mako was not awarded tax credits in last year's opportunity, and so they have updated, tightened, and resubmitted their home application, and they're working toward applying again in the 2024 tax credit application process. Now, Southbrook Estates is proposed as a 50-unit garden-style apartment project. It is for individuals ages 55 and older and/or individuals with disabilities. It will include a total of seven residential buildings. Each of the two building, single-story residences, is built using the Universal Design Standards and the National Home Builders Green Standards. Residences come equipped with most major appliances, including washer, dryer, microwave, refrigerator, dishwasher, and high-efficiency HVAC systems. So this is one of the areas where the application is a little bit tighter this year. Last year, there were some market rate units. This year, all units are affordable at lower area median income price points. And so we have a total of eight units proposed that will be affordable for households at 30% of area median income, and the rent on those would be 425 per unit. Seventeen units are proposed for households at 50% of AMI, with rents at 675, and then the remaining 25 units would be affordable at 60% AMI, and so rents at 705. Rent does include most utilities, with the exception of electric, and also includes all maintenance. And so the proposal today is that Mako has requested a total of 150,000 in home housing development loan program financing for the construction of the Southbrook Estate project. So staff review has found that the project is consistent with the city's comprehensive housing policy. The availability component specifically relates to persons with disabilities, and also the affordability component. We wanted to note that persons with disabilities are considered to be a special needs population. There's a strong likelihood that their housing needs will include accessibility features that can be difficult to find. And so we note that a larger number of older adults and persons with disabilities are lower income, often social security represents a primary income source for households that would be served by this proposed complex. Again, the project is consistent with the city's consolidated plan. A top priority need is safe and affordable housing. This includes for older adults, persons with physical disabilities, and persons with developmental disabilities. And so Housing and Community Services staff recommend approving the issuance of the conditional commitment letter, which is what we're asking for today. This conditional commitment letter would be subject to securing all necessary financing, obtaining environmental clearance, and final underwriting. This proposal also has been through the Affordable Housing Review Board and has been recommended by that board. And so I'd like to share, or to invite Dan, Dan Sanders with Mako, to share a little bit more about the proposal, and then either, we'll finish out the council presentation, and either of us would be available for questions.
Hello. My name's Dan Sanders. I am with Mako Development Company. Our corporate address is 111 North Main Street, Clarkton, Missouri. And thank you for allowing me to present you information about our proposal to build these 50 single-story garden-style apartments for seniors. Our request for these city home funds will fill the sources gap to make this development financially feasible, and while keeping the rents affordable for the senior and disabled population it will serve. The approval of these participation funds is critical in the scoring by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, as they determine which developments they award their funds to throughout the state. Like the City of Wichita home funds, the KHRC tax credits and federal funding are scarce and highly competitive resources, and without all of these resources, Southbrook Estates is not financially feasible. This is a rendering of what the type of building will look like that we're proposing to build for Southbrook Estates. You say these are single-story, they'll have a front porch and a rear patio. This is located at 5535 South Broadway, 55th and Broadway, immediately in that lot behind the Walgreens there. We will have access both off of 55th and Broadway. Seven single-story residential buildings, fifty-two story, two-bedroom affordable garden-style apartments. Fifty-five-plus senior community, all residents must be 55 years of age and older. Because of the federal funding and the timing and requirements it takes to get through all the closing process, we would probably not be able to start construction until about this time next year. A 12- to 14-month construction period, so early 2026 is when these units would be coming online. And they'll be managed locally by YGand Omega Management Company. YGand Omega manages a lot of our properties for us in Oklahoma, and they're a perfect fit for this property here, since this is their headquarters. This is about $11.7 million project. The majority of the sources for this property comes from the tax credit equity. Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, if we're successful in our application, will award credits, which are then sold to investors, which are admitted as limited partners into the property, and they bring the majority of the equity and the sources for this project. About nine, almost 10 million, 9.9 million. We will have a conventional mortgage. We'll also be asking Kansas Housing for National Housing Trust Fund funds. These home funds that we're requesting here today, and then we will also be back in March to, I think we're working with staff to try to come up with a plan to ask for permit fee waivers. And again, these are critical in the scoring with Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. This is one of the steps we've taken to increase our chances for having approval from Kansas Housing this year. The uses of the funds, about 8.3 million strictly for construction. The land is 1.1. Soft costs and fees are 2.1 million, and reserves are another 226,000. This is the site plan for the property. Again, as I pointed out, we will have access both off 55th and Broadway, very convenient location for the seniors, infill for the neighborhood, single-story garden style. Aesthetically, it should fit in well into the neighborhood. Again, as Sarah said, the eight apartments are at, for the affordable people at the 30% AMI, net rents of 425. Seventeen apartments for, affordable for people at the 50% AMI with rents of 675, and 25 apartments are affordable for 60% AMI with rents of 705, and all of these rents are below the HUD-published Wichita fair market rents. That's, that was a critical point, again, why we lowered the rents this year to increase our scoring ability at Kansas Housing. This is the rendering of what the community building will look like. The community building will have an exercise room with commercial-grade workout equipment for the residents, a community room with tables for games, puzzles, carry-in dinners, a living room area with a large-screen television, a kitchen for community meals, carry-in meals from the residents. The community room in these senior properties is, is used extensively. There, everything there from daily card games to, to monthly gatherings for birthday parties and carry-in dinners, and so they're, it's a critical part of bringing a social environment to the senior residents. We'll also have on-site an accessible community garden. Many seniors like the ability to still plant gardens, so we will plan a, have an accessible community garden on-site. This is the building plan for the community building. Again, the exercise, the fitness room, the community room, kitchen, and the offices for the management. This is a picture of a property where we had recently completed a, an accessible community garden. These are all raised beds to allow people that, that need access, access to be able to also participate in planting of the gardens. The apartments themselves will have 900 heated square feet, front porch, back patio, storage area. As Sarah pointed out, we have all, all appliances, including washers and dryers. They will be designed to meet Energy Star requirements, and there'll be three fully accessible units when we first build the property, but all of the residences will incorporate universal design. So they will already have the blocking in the walls, they'll have the switches lower, the plugs higher, everything can be adaptable as a resident needs it. This is the unit plan, the typical floor plan. And this is the accessible, the fully accessible floor plan. I'll also show you a few pictures of a recently completed project up near, it's near Kansas City, at Carney, Missouri, and also have given you links here for other information about other properties we do, and an actual virtual tour if you want to see what one of these apartments looks like. This is a community building of what, the one we just completed, very much like the This is the actual buildings and what they look like. Again, a lot of brick. We build these to maintain them and own them for the long term, so we want low maintenance, so a lot of brick, a lot of low-maintenance materials for the long term. Ariel of what we, of what the property looks like. This is actually a unique property. It's got the actual, the senior citizen, the senior center is on one side, and it, and it also has, it has a Dollar General next to it. I mean, so like the Walgreens here, we look for places that are convenient to the seniors for, for things that they need in their daily lives. This is the interior for the community area, the living room area with the television, the exercise area, the community kitchen. And it's the end of my presentation. I think Sarah still has some things, but I'll be available if you have any questions directly for me, too.
So as far as financial considerations, these, again, are entitlement funds, so there is no impact to the city's general fund. The project cost, as Dan mentioned, is just under 12 million, 11.702010. You mentioned the financing stack, so the home funds that are being requested are a small portion of that financing stack, but they are important to demonstrate that local buy-in as the project proposal moves forward to KHRC. And so the city's home funding would be provided in the form of an interest-bearing loan at an interest rate of 1%. Legally, today, a funding, or a funding agreement would be drafted. It would be approved to form by the law department, and in the future would be brought back to City Council. City Council for approval, provided that Mako is successful in obtaining the other sources of financing and environmental clearance. So today, what we're requesting is simply the conditional commitment of these funds. And so with that, our recommendation is that the City Council would approve issuance of the conditional commitment letter for Home Investment Partnerships Program financing for the South Brook Estates project and authorize the Director of Housing and Community Services to sign. And I would be glad to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions from City Councilmember Ho Heisler first?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation and all you guys are doing. I can't wait to see. Affordable housing is definitely something we need here. You hit on a point, we had an item earlier where they talked about the difficulty in securing the low-income tax credits. And you guys kind of hit on that, too, about ways that we can help make it more likely that you guys are going to get some of these alongside the 9% tax credit you're talking. What all can we do as a city to help ensure that we get these tax credits? Is there anything as far as policy? I heard the waivers was one of them that you had talked about. I think this came up recently, Sally, with discussions around the MAC as well, ways that we could help this. So I don't know that it necessarily pertains to this item, but just overall?
Yes, actually, we've had several developers come to us with very similar requests, primarily because of the way that KHRC evaluates applications and to work to try to help Wichita become more competitive within these processes. So that, I know that there is staff conversation and analysis right now of the proposed fee waiver that was mentioned. And then we've also worked to connect as well. I see Sally heading up. She is probably the better person to speak to this.
Sally on the spot, always.
Well, good morning, Mayor, members of council. You're spot on. We're evaluating the qualified allocation plan by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. We do know that by providing fee waivers, projects are guaranteed points. In addition, construction sales tax exemption is another area in which projects can score points. Now, mind you, that often happens in our multifamily housing projects that do 4% credits because it kind of comes alongside with the issuance of bonds. This is the first time that KHRC, you know, is really now pushing that sales tax exemption is another opportunity. It complicates a 9% project, but we really need to consider it. The City of Wichita has only received four allocations in the 9% competitive applications in the last seven years. And compared to other communities, that, it isn't enough, right? For the amount of need that we have. They also offer additional points for our property tax exemptions. And so that's something that we have been talking about moving forward, but will definitely be coming back very soon. We're having conversations also with the county related to those permit fee waivers because that is a joint city-county initiative, and we're hearing positive things from there, too.
Okay, I don't know if we have a workshop planned on affordable housing in the near future, if that's maybe something we could get, get on the agenda. I know we have some budget ones coming up and quite a few planned, but this is...
Later, possibly this summer is, I think, when we're going to talk about affordable housing.
Okay, are we going to loop county in on that, too, or is that just...
We weren't talking about en banc initially. We were talking about a workshop with council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
This is a follow-up to one of Sally's statements. So four applications out of seven years, how many applications does the state approve on a yearly basis?
That can vary from year to year depending on the amount of tax credits each project is requesting as well as the state's annual allocation. I do have that list of every project, and I have it broken down both by number of units as well as by community, and I'd be glad to share that with you.
But it's not proportional to the size of Wichita or the rest of the state?
Not at all.
In addition, I know when we had met, you had mentioned that we're only, and let me know if I'm confusing projects, but if there's a limit of only 100 units the city can apply for, or a limit of 100 units that were eligible for?
No, not necessarily, no. That limitation of the number of units, it's more on a limitation of dollars that they're setting aside in both the new construction and the rehabilitation pots. And that can vary from year to year as to what they're putting forward. But there is no specific limit. There are limitations in that they have set asides that are specifically for rural communities versus urban communities, but it doesn't necessarily get into the number of units. It's more about the dollars.
We had also talked about the price per unit for this development. Can you speak to that as well?
Sure. So the use of the Housing Development Loan Program, historically, we've done mainly the infill development of single-family homes. And as we see with that program, we have a cap of $90,000 in subsidy per unit. In this particular project, if we get, if we get 50 units out of it for $150,000, that's $3,000 of subsidy per unit. That's a huge win in increasing the number of units in our community.
Thank you for building that capacity. And then last question I have is, this guarantees, or with this project would be a guarantee of 20 years of affordability, correct?
This year, well, actually, it's going to end up beyond that. So we'll have a 15-year affordability period per the tax credits. But in order to boost the score, the development is committing to having the 30-year affordability. So it's even beyond 20.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. For the developer, I have a couple of questions for you. What development fee do you have built in there? Where is it built in? Is it your soft cost or is it...
It's under the soft cost.
Soft cost?
Yes.
What fee, what percent is that?
It's the fee that's limited, let me see if I have the exact number with me. We are limited by, it's around a million dollars is what the development fee is, is total. And that is our fee basically to guarantee everything for 15 years. Our guarantees are on the line personally for that.
So you're looking at about 8%-ish?
Yeah.
Minus, okay. So you're selling these to investors?
Yes, sir.
Couple, couple things. What's the cap rate you're selling to investors? What do you anticipate it to be? And then what if you don't sell it?
The cap rate right now, we're fighting some things. I mean, the credit pricing has come down the last few years. I mean, interest rates going up, there's many other things that are affecting what we're able to sell these for. But right now, we're selling state credits, which are the Kansas Housing Resources credits for like 55 cents on the dollar, and the federal credits are in the low 80 cents per credit on the dollar. But again, that's a 10-year stream of credits, so you have to take them and get the present value, and that's their... And I don't know, Jason, do you know exactly about what kind of cap rate we're seeing right now on credit equity? No. Like I say, I do know the price is down from where we were probably three, four years ago, but...
Okay, well, they're much needed.
Yes.
Pleased for taking on the task.
And it is federal pricing, so it's, like I say, we do go out in the market and try to get the best price possible. So, thank you.
I see no further questions from the bench. Any questions from the audience? Welcome. Please state your name, your address.
Good morning, Mayor Wu and members of the council. My name is Terry Hutton. I'm a resident of southeast Wichita. Is that okay? I just actually have two clarifying questions. Just returning to the city from South Carolina, and so sitting in today and wanting to ask just a couple of questions about this project in particular for clarification. I heard the phrase "special needs" population. That being said, 55 and older, it's a senior community. Does that mean that we're serving individuals with assisted living needs, intellectual, developmental disabilities, or is it just 55 and older? That's one question that I have. And then there was a statement regarding construction starting possibly this time next year. That being the case, when would the review of applications take place, review, and when would they be accepted? That was it.
We will, disabled, we will have physically and mentally disabled residents here. This is not assisted living. This is all independent living, so they have to be able to live on their own. But like I say, we do meet all thermitifair housing marketing, and they will be physically and mentally disabled people that could live here, too. We don't differentiate there. And we would actually start marketing late, we started in 2025, late 2025, we'd start marketing so that typically these properties are full from day one. We'll do pre-marketing, you know, three or four months ahead of time, but that's usually not an issue. They're usually full the minute we open the doors on these.
I see no further questions from the audience. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to our last speaker, welcome to Wichita and thank you for being
Councilmember Glasscock.
I want to thank Dan as well as Jason for meeting with me this week. I also want to thank Sally and Sarah for an incredible job, only being here a month. They helped me synthesize information very clearly and incredible experts when it comes to their department and also the use of federal dollars to make sure that we advocate for residents here in Wichita as well. I'm just wanting to point out again, I know it was in the presentation, but I think it's pretty incredible, that eight of the 50 apartments, rent will be at 425, 17 of the apartments will be at 675, and 25 and then will be at 705. So when we're talking about affordable housing, this is a plan that makes it a reality, and we need more of this, especially in the south side. I think it's a great location for it. I think it fits the character of the neighborhood. I like that you're targeting next to Walgreens as well to be able to help with needs for, especially those that may not be able to transit. And the last thing I would say is $3,000 per unit is an incredible return on investment for the city for this type of project. So thank you for that work, much better than the $90,000 per unit, so.
I see no further council members asking questions or comments. I will add one additional item. Dan, would there be a possibility for more opportunities? I know you mentioned Missouri, and we in Wichita would always welcome more housing. I think we have all appreciated the conversations today specifically to housing. And so the question would be back to you, would there be more possibilities beyond this
Definitely yes. If we can get this one going, we'll be glad to come back and provide other opportunities if we can and look to opportunities that you may have available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Glasscock has made a motion.
Dan, as I said multiple times, I'll be glad to take you out to lunch. You can spend your money in Wichita while you're here as well. So thank you for coming to Wichita. And as Mayor Wu said, hopefully this is the start of a partnership where you bring more developments like this. And I'm looking forward to the new residents of the fourth district that will come in this project. So with that, I would motion that we approve the issuance of a conditional commitment letter for the Home Investment Partnership Program financing an amount of $150,000 for the Mako Development South Brook Estates project and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 6-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Liquor tax-funded caseworker for homeless care coordination team.
So good morning again, Mayor and Council. Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. My understanding is our PowerPoint isn't here? Okay, I can win this. You guys? All right. The item I have is for liquor tax-funded caseworker for the homeless care coordination team. So the liquor tax funding began, the policy guidelines were developed in 1999, and then they were reaffirmed in 2005 on how the city allocates and monitors special liquor tax funding. So those policy guidelines and the Kansas state statutes provide the framework on how things are allocated and monitored. In August of last year, the Housing Department became aware, was notified, that some of the liquor tax funding remained unallocated, an increase unexpected as to the amount received. So staff from the courts, who usually handles liquor tax allocations, and the Housing Department met and inquired with stakeholders, including the homeless outreach team, the continuum of care agencies, and the homeless care coordination teams to identify if there was a need for substance abuse case management among people experiencing homelessness. And you can imagine, the answer was unanimous, yes, a resounding yes. There's a tremendous need for substance abuse case management and treatment services for those experiencing homelessness, as many of them are uninsured. And substance abuse is prevalent among many of those experiencing homelessness. So on October 27th, a request for proposals was issued for both a substance abuse case manager as well as inpatient beds. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any proposals for the inpatient beds, but we did receive two proposals for the case management services. So on January 8th, a selection committee was convened with representatives from purchasing, courts, finance, law, and Housing and Community Services. And the committee selected the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas for contracting work for substance abuse case management to work alongside our homeless care coordination teams. And so last year, we deployed these teams, these homeless care coordination teams. They were funded with our Project Hope dollars as well as some CDBG cares funds. And we've seen tremendous results from changing how we are providing case management for people experiencing homelessness by wrapping them with a full team. Right now, those teams include a housing case manager, a social work intern from either Newman or WSU, as well as peer support specialists. So these are folks that have been trained but have lived experience in homelessness. And then those teams, we have contracts with Workforce Alliance and Goodwill to provide workforce development activities and opportunities for folks that engage with our teams. The addition of a substance abuse case manager to work with those teams, to me, I think is a game changer. The ability to be able to have someone who can do substance abuse assessments and then hopefully link to inpatient beds could really be what changes the lives for some people experiencing homelessness. So we are recommending funding in the amount of $94,464.2 that covers salary and benefits for a full-time licensed addiction counselor to work with the care coordination teams, as well as 1/10 of one FTE for their supervision at SAC. And then the contract also includes some administrative expenses related to cell phones and mileage and office supplies, as well as some client services funds. So some funds that would be available if the client needs identification or transportation, whatever that barrier is to getting into treatment and then getting into housing. Because if we can get people into treatment and they come right out of treatment into housing rather than back into old habits or back to the streets, we believe we'll have much better successes. And it is our intention to issue a new RFP for the inpatient beds. That's a key, key part of this whole stream. But we wanted to get the contract with SAC in place because they are going to assist us in making sure that our RFP is seen by all providers in this space in our community. As we know, there is a lack of resources, so we want to make sure they're all seeing it. Legal considerations, the Law Department has approved the contract as to form, and it is our recommendation that the City Council approve the liquor tax allocation of $94,464.2 and the contract for substance abuse case management services with the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Sally, I have a couple of questions. So I'm completely in support. I think this is fantastic. My concern is, do you have any idea why nobody responded to the RFP? I mean, the bed piece is so incredibly important, most of us know that. Do you have any idea why we didn't get a good response and what will change in the RFP when you send it back out?
Some feedback I got from Nathan Emery in courts was at the time we had put it out, they were still in the process of a contract amendment that occurred with DECO, which is the biggest provider that courts uses. We do recognize their capacity of agencies in our community is challenging. So we're hopeful that a second round of RFP will result in actually receiving responses.
Because you believe that the program will be most successful with that component?
With beds, absolutely.
So what happens if we don't?
If we don't get beds, I mean, obviously, the licensed addiction counselor can provide outpatient substance abuse... outpatient substance abuse services, and then still try and connect people with other beds funded other ways. But this, you know, we see this ability to have dedicated beds that that counselor would have access to, would just expedite the process.
I agree. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you to Sally and your team for always being so innovative. I appreciate it. I know that you're doing every single thing that you can to make sure that we're addressing one of the most critical issues that our city has, is homelessness, and it's tied so clearly to mental health and substance abuse. I just have a question. If I missed this somewhere, I apologize, but because of my background, I'm always thinking about sustainability. The worst thing that we can do is start some great program and then not be able to continue it. So the genesis, from what I understand, is that, and I never realized how much I missed a PowerPoint until just right now, because it kind of helps me keep things straight. But in August, when y'all were notified that there was liquor tax funding that was remaining, what if there isn't in the future? And if I missed that, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that if we have, you know, and I see Nathan is here and can also address this. And then I do have one more question after this one, but thank you.
You want to take it this way?
Yes.
So there is ample funding to fund this program in addition, and with the potential of the actual beds for about 10 years. And that's been programmed into what we're looking at for utilization of the liquor tax funds. So there is kind of earmarked dollars for this that we budgeted into liquor tax budget for this year and going forward.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was hoping you were going to say. And then just so the community is clear, because again, I think this is such a good option, and it's kind of setting the stage for the MAC of what we hope to have soon, right, with wraparound services and providing people an option to get out of homelessness and not just shelter for the immediate need, which is what I think we all agree we should have. How many people do you anticipate could be impacted by this program manually?
The impact of the program, you know, right now, when we put out the RFP for beds, it was for 20 people to be able to get inpatient services each year, you know, with the idea that it would be a one-year contract renewed for, at the time, three years, thank you.
Better news.
Yes. Although, you know, our care coordination teams interface with hundreds of people between the different teams. And so being able to connect those who are interested in treatment services, even though they may not necessarily go into those treatment beds, there may be other resources that caseworker is providing. So I mean, the number of people that they could be impacting is a lot more than the 20 that we would have for the beds.
Excellent. And just a final thought. Vice Mayor Ballard and I have the luxury of starting on the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition Board. This might be something that we have you just come and give them an update about so that they're aware of what's going on, too. I know that SAC is represented there and knows, but other community partners may not. So I just want to make sure that we're always letting our community partners and the community know what efforts we are making towards these very important issues. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, too. And just to clarify, too, we did reach out to Don Schapler with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition before putting out the RFP and even getting that feedback on how this could potentially work.
Councilmember Johnson.
Sally, thank you for doing a great job. I admire the work you do. You may not know this, but how many beds do we have in the community now?
That I could not answer you on the inpatient beds for substance abuse, but we can find out.
What, this may be a guess, too, but what would your guess be of the estimated number of people we'd need in the same type of position?
The estimated number of people experiencing homelessness?
No, no. Number of people, counselors, we would need to meet the need now.
To meet the need now.
Just a guess.
That's a tough one. I mean, if you use last year's point and time count of 702, and they're saying that, you know, the statistics are saying 65 to 70% have substance abuse issues, I mean, we could do the math on that to say, and then you're talking 20 to 30 clients per caseworker. I mean, it's a lot. It really is a lot. I'd have to do the math.
Yeah, thank you.
I see no further questions. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I will add one additional comment, Sally. Thank you for mentioning Goodwill Industries and their Next Up Alliance programs. They are available, and I appreciate that that's also part of the plan, providing more opportunities for individuals to realize their full potential and know that there are resources out there in our community that can help with that. Is there a councilmember who would like to make a motion?
I'll.
Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to recommend the City Council to approve the liquor tax allocation of $94,464.2 and the Contract for Substance Abuse Case Management Services with the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
ZON 2023-66, Zone Change Request in the City from TF3 Two-Family Residential District to MF29 Multi-Family Residential District to redevelop existing home into a multi-family dwelling generally located on the southeast corner of South OC Street and South Santa Fe Avenue, 1704 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council Philip Zievenbergen with the Planning Department. This zone change request is coming before you because the Planning Commission recommendation and the DAB recommendation were different. A little bit of background on this, this was originally heard by City Council several weeks ago on December 6th. I guess that's over almost two months ago. Oh, I'm sorry, January 16th, about a month ago. And the action at the City Council at that time was to defer this item until today to give the Council more time for consideration. Little bit of background on this, it is located at 1704 South Santa Fe. It's on the southeast corner of South Santa Fe and East OC. The property was originally developed as a church. As stated in the case description, it is a two-family residential, and the purpose of the request is so that the property owner could redevelop the property into multi-family residential. In terms of context, again, the yellow indicates two-family residential zoning. You can see on the north and west and south, there's single family in the white. There's two-family to the west, as well as to the east, and then across the alleyway to the east is limited industrial zoning. The staff report that you provided has conversation about density, parking, landscaping, and screening requirements. In terms of review, on December 14th, the Planning Commission originally heard this item and recommended approval of the zone change, 11 to 0. At this public hearing, no members of the public spoke. On December 6th, the District 3 Advisory Board heard the item and recommended denial of the application with a 5-0-1 vote. Members of the public at this meeting had questions regarding parking and the number of units that would be available with the zone change. One member of the public spoke in opposition. In support of and leading up to their recommendation, the DAB through members expressed concern about the effect on the nearby properties. No protests were filed on this application. This map shows you the notification and the protest area, which in this case match at 200 feet. So the action of the City Council can be approved if it is approved by a simple majority vote. As I mentioned before, on January 16th, the City Council considered the item and recommended deferral to today's date. So in terms of recommendation, it is recommended that the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, it's my normal presentation, that the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval upon second reading. And again, this requires a simple majority vote. Alternatives in this case is to override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the zone change request. That takes five of seven. Any alterations of an approval, if there were to be a protective overlay or anything like that, would also be an overriding of the MAPC. That would also take five votes. And as always, it can be returned to Planning Commission for additional consideration with a four of seven vote. And as a reminder, in terms of process, the public comment is heard at Planning Commission, and City Council has a policy that typically does not take additional public comment at this time. I can finish going through the slides here on our presentation. This is looking north toward the site. This is the south facade of the building. This is looking east at the building, looking south at the building, and this is the rear of the building. This is looking north across OC, looking to the east at the dwelling that's in between the church and the industrial properties along the railroad track. This is the property to the south and to the west, and I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. This resides in Councilmember Hohe Heisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. The DAB turned it down five to nothing. They had concerns about the number of units going in and parking. They did not have a representative there to answer the question, so I delayed it, and I've been in talks with the property owner. So I'd like to make a motion that will help ease some of the concerns with my DAB, and I've talked this over again with the property owner, and they are fine with this. I'm just making sure that we limit it to four units currently. So I'd like to make a motion to override the MAPC and approve the requested zone change with a protective overlay with the following language: "The maximum number of dwelling units shall be limited to four dwelling units." In support of this motion, I offer the following finding: "The protective overlay will help ensure that future development of the property will not have a significant detrimental effect on nearby properties."
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
ZON 2023-68, Zone Change Request in the City from SF5 Single Family Residential District to NR Neighborhood Retail District with Protective Overlay Number 424 for Commercial Development, generally located on the east side of North Rock Road within one-half mile north of East 45th Street North.
Again, for the record, Philip Zievenbergen with the Planning Department. This zone change request is located right on the boundary of Wichita in Bel Air, up on North Rock Road, north of 45th Street, about a half a mile between 45th and 53rd. The property was originally platted as a reserve, which generally is used for signage or landscaping, drainage areas, things like that. And the developer is looking to do some limited amount of commercial development on a portion of the platted reserve that fronts North Rock Road of the Sawmill Creek addition at this location. They're requesting neighborhood retail, which is one step below limited commercial. It allows a limited number, it allows for retail, it has a limited number of like restaurants, has some restrictions on there, allows for office uses and some other uses as well. The applicant voluntarily came in with the idea of a protective overlay, as we all remember, is additional restrictions on the zoning. The details of that was in your staff report. Just a couple of highlights I want to mention. Number one, architectural controls, specifically in the way in which the buildings are designed to be compatible with the surrounding residential development in terms of having a double-pitched gable or hip-style roofs, and specifically mentioning having similar materials as the existing single-family residential development nearby. It is limiting the height to 35 feet, which is what is the maximum height standard in SF5, which is the zoning it has now. It has some sign restrictions, has some controls as to the appearance of light fixtures being consistent throughout the commercial development, has some use restrictions, so not the full gamut of neighborhood retail would be permitted. And then it also has further restrictions on setbacks to not allow the full use of the area that neighborhood retail would allow, specifically having a minimum of a 20-foot setback along the north property line, which is a budding residentially zoned property in the city of Bel Air. Speaking of which, the surrounding property to the north is R4 Residential in the city of Bel Air. It is currently undeveloped. Property to the south and east are SF5 in the city of Wichita. Both of those are also undeveloped. They are part of the reserve network of this overall larger subdivision. The property to the west across Rock Road is R3 Residential in the city of Bel Air, and it's developed with single-family homes. As you can see, there is a bit of a distance between the eastern property line of this and the backyards of the single-family residences. Some of that is to preserve the nature of the reserve that was originally platted. You can see that there's a stream in there, and there's probably some drainage needs, and stormwater management that has to occur in that area anyway, but also to continue to keep a buffer between any commercial development and the residential development that's nearby. The staff report includes conversation about compatibility setbacks, as well as screening and landscaping requirements. On December 28th, the Planning Commission considered this and recommended approval 9 to 1, including the protective overlay. Two members of the public spoke in opposition to the request, citing concerns about drainage, and they were opposed to just commercial development in the area. On January 10th, District 2 Advisory Board recommended approval, 8 to 0 of the zone change requests, including the protective overlay, and no members of the public spoke at this public hearing. There was one protest received on this. It was outside the protest area. We felt it was necessary and just gave it due process in order to bring this as a non-consent item today because of a protest, though it was not valid in terms of it was received, and it had everything it needed to, invalid in that it does not count towards any type of a vote count because it was not within the 200-foot protest area that's set by state statute. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the recommended zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading. Again, this takes four of seven votes. Alternatives will include override the MAPC, adopt alternate findings, and deny the zone change. That would take five of seven, or it can be returned back to Planning Commission for additional consideration with a simple majority, four of seven votes. Again, the policy of public comment has received at the Planning Commission and the DAB, and City Council has a policy to not include additional public comment at this time. This is looking north at the property, and looking east, looking north along Rock Road, looking west at the single-family homes in Bel Air, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Philip. Any questions from staff? Or staff? I see none. This resides in Councilmember Tuttle's district.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you to Philip. Also thank you to MAPD staff and legal. We had an opportunity to meet last week, just to make sure we all understood why this was on the council agenda, because the only protest was from outside of the area. I did want to mention, just for the record, I've had no ex parte communication with the applicant or anyone in the community regarding this. And so with that, I would make the motion that the City Council adopt the findings of MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading. Thank you.
Was that all, Becky? Was that all? Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Lord, okay, we're going to do a member appointments first. I see Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Have quite a few reappointments. I'll start with Wichita Airport Advisory Board. I'd like to reappoint Jerome Kotner for the Community Services Block Grant Review Committee. I'd like to reappoint Tommy Benford for the public sector. I'd like to reappoint Dr. Latasha Kelly for the private sector. For the Food and Farm Council, I'd like to reappoint Donna Pearson-McClish. For the Transit Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint Ben Blankley. For the Park Board of Commissioners, I'd like to reappoint Alejo Cabral. For the Wichita Employee Retirement Board, I'd like to reappoint Arlen Hamilton. For the Historic Preservation Board, I'd like to reappoint Janice Rich. And for the District 1 Advisory Board, I'd like to reappoint Chelsea Jackson, Twyla Purity, L. Boltman, Mary Beth Yarnell, Lawanda DeShager, Michaela Pack, and Natalie Merton.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Robin Templin to the Library Board.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I would like to.
I would like to appoint Nathan McClure to the Parks Board of Commissioners.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Janet Johnson to the District Advisory Board.
Any further appointments? I see none. Is there a motion to approve these names?
The motion to approve the names as presented.
Second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. Councilmember Comments At This Time. Full board. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Not a comment, actually. I have a question for my colleague, Councilmember Glasscock, on the pickleball item earlier. Were you referring to a council workshop or bringing that back to a council?
A workshop is permissible. That was my intention.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Hello. Two things. First off, I just want to, because it was on the consent agenda item, I just want to highlight the land acquisition of the new fire station at Maze and Pawnee. That was a commitment that I heard a lot over this past year. And I'm excited that the council is moving on it very quickly. Now, it's very needed in the area. So thank you to my colleagues for supporting that as well. In addition, I would like to add to a future workshop as well, a workshop regarding public comment. How we handle public comment? What's the best way to handle public comment and public engagement? I don't know if that's needed to have a vote to add it to a workshop. That's a request. I'm going to make a motion if that is needed.
I think that's just a request because it's a workshop request.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Big game coming up this Sunday. Go Chiefs.
Go Chiefs.
Vice Mayor Ballard. That's what I came to say is go Chiefs. I actually have one item. There's no one else for public comment or comment from the bench. I just wanted to promote something really quickly from Rotary Club of Wichita. There is an application process right now going on for economic development. They want to request any ideas to be sent to them. The economic development grants are available, and it can be up to $150,000. So again, if people are interested in something like that, contact Rotary Club of Wichita. I see no further comments at this time. We do have one additional item before we can recess. I have a motion to move that the city council recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4318B3, Employer-Employee Negotiations In Consultation With The Representatives Of The City For 30 Minutes To Discuss Negotiations Of The SEIU And FOP Agreements And Reconvene The Meeting In Council Chambers At 12:20? 12:20? Oh. 12:30 PM, sorry. 12:30 PM. The executive session is necessary to protect the city's right to confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest. Do I have a second?
Second. Members, please cast your vote. Motion passes 7-0. We will recess into executive session until 12:30 PM.
And Mayor, my, because you're going till 12:30 and it's a 30-minute session. We, executive session won't start until, if that's what the intention was. Thank you.
Executive session will begin at noon, so council members can take a tiny break.